Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City of Bett North Committee, the whole meeting. Today is Monday, October 2nd, 2023. It's 5 o'clock PM. We have some consent agenda items to discuss. So we'll get started with our fire chief Troy Sade and our finance director Jason Shat. We're going to talk to us about consent item B as employed. Gentlemen, congratulations on the good work. Troy gets a appointed chief. We get new firefighters with a safer grant, the biggest fire in the history of the city.
A lot happening.
That's one week, buddy.
I know. So this is how we're going to roll, so get ready. No, but thank you, your honor. I first like to thank council, city administrative staff for helping out. We've been putting in for this grant since 2005, believe it or not. And there's a lot of work to it. There's a lot of information that goes into the grant that is out of our purview. So we have to rely on economic development, you know, community development for their expertise in order to get that done. So this year, of course, you all know, we were awarded the grant. We're awarded the grant on September 20th of this year. We have 30 days to accept it or decline it, which I'm hoping tomorrow that'll be an easy answer for all of you up there. And then there's 180 day grace period with that. It's a recruitment period to where we have to have all six of the firefighters hired within 180 days to get that full $2,53,398. So we have a schedule for that. That's on track, so we should be good moving forward with that. What the safer grant really is, it provides 100% of the funding for the base salary and benefit package for six firefighters over three years. So it's a significant cost savings and we're looking forward to moving forward with that. Depending on the vote tomorrow with council, I would plan to accept that grant the very next day on October 4th, so we could get moving forward with it. So I would ask if there's any questions from any of you regarding it? Yes, sir. Mr. Connors?
How do you feel about the candidate pool with 180 day limitation on your hiring?
Well, it's going to work out really well for us and Kathleen and I worked really hard on that. Right now, left on our current list, we have three firefighters that we'd be able to offer positions to. One of them already accepted for replacement of Chief Canoric. So we're going to lump him in that group, which is going to help us operational wise moving forward with two week orientation, 30 day orientation, instead of having one and then three. And then we'll start that second phase. Actually, October 23rd, well, the application period will go out and then we'll end up hiring three more from that list. We should get the top three out of that list if everything works out how it's planned. So very fortunate because sometimes you make a list of 10, you only hire one and then they get picked off to go to other departments and you may end up with number nine or number 10.
Excellent, thank you. Other questions? Jerry?
Thank you, your honor. Do we have adequate funds in the budget to pay for those expenses that the city needs to pick up, like turnout gear and stuff like that?
Yeah, and I'll let Jason get into the details on that. I've been working closely with Jason, obviously, to get that done. A little bit's going to come out of our current budget. We're going to have to cut a little, you know, little programs here and there or maybe a couple of trainings here and there to help out, but I'll defer to Jason if he wants to.
Yeah, we've already identified a couple of spots where within the existing budget, we've had some vacancies throughout the years, things like that, that we can draw those funds from. So we'll be able to cover the city's costs here in year one without any changes.
So good planning, thank you.
What's it look like in year three?
Year three, we're looking at, you know, the impact of equivalent to, I'd say 30 to 35 cents, just like we were, what was it, three years ago when we hired six firefighters and we raised the levy 30 cents? So that's, you know, without having taken a deep dive, and I'm sure we'll discuss this pretty thoroughly at budget time, but I think you could plan on the need for tax revenue equivalent to about 30 to 35 cents on the levy or other funding options. But that's kind of what we're looking at come year three. And I think staff's recommendation would be, you know, let's ease up into that and not take the full bite there in year three.
Frank?
You just answered my questions.
Okay. Other questions? All right, this is currently on the agenda for on consent tomorrow, agenda item B. If you'd like to remain the same, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll take it up as consent item B tomorrow evening. The next consent agenda item we're going to discuss is letter C. And for that, we welcome our Director of Culture and Recreation, Kim Kidwell, to talk about our exhibits changing.
Awesome. Thank you, your honor, council members. So tonight, I'm just going to give you a short overview of our traveling gallery renovation project, which, as most of you know, has been in the works for quite some time now. This is a renovation of our 2,500 square foot traveling gallery, which we are renovating to permanent exhibits. And we have the design packet that was just finished here just about a month ago. And we are ready to go out to bid. We're ready to set the public hearing and move on to the next phase. The design was about $125,000, which was fully funded, fully fundraised for. The estimated cost of this renovation will be about $750,000 to $850,000. Of course, we won't know the true cost until we do get the bids back. So just a quick overview here. Our vision, this is our vision and our mission, which this renovation will certainly go right into what the museum stands for. We're going to be engaging families, caregivers, teachers. We are going to create, this exhibit is going to be multi-generational in attraction with a road trip, all kinds of nostalgic things for parents, grandparents to reminisce about road trips they've taken as a child or through their life. And we're hoping that there's a lot of conversation that goes around that when people and families visit this exhibit. This is our sort of the learning framework work of the exhibit. We really planned hard with our board, our members, our regular members, local, early childhood, people in the community. We had lots of discussion about this exhibit. We talked about accessibility. We talked about sensory awareness, places that kids could have a different experience within this gallery if they wanted to. So it's really been about an 18-month process of planning this exhibit to where we are now. And then just kind of going through, we always look at the different types of play that kids in our age range, which is eight and under, need to accomplish as little people. So we've got all of the different types of play and the different fine motor, growth motor, social emotional. All of those things will be hit upon in this new exhibit. So just a quick overview, this is kind of looking from the top down, from ceiling down. We're going to have a, over here, we're going to have a garage where you're going to get your car ready for your road trip. Then you're going to pack your van along the way. Of course, there needs to be places to eat, so there'll be a 50s diner. And then as you go along the road, you're going to see many roadside attractions that you would see and maybe stop and pull over and look at with your family. There will be a campsite where you'll be able to camp. You'll be able to do some caving. You'll be able to climb a mountain and look at some views from above. And then you will also be able to look for different bugs, things like that in your environment, which is great. So just kind of looking a little bit, this is kind of looking from the corner of the gallery spacing towards the museum. We have our diner over there to the left. The big dinosaur you see, there's going to be some mini golf because whenever you go on vacation, I don't know about you, but we always play mini golf.
Where's the green station wagon with the wood paneling on the sides? The board games in the back, no seat belts?
Right. I mean, I know, I know. That's true. Well, see, that's the kind of conversations we're hoping to spark. When I traveled, I didn't wear a seatbelt in the back. And then just another, this is kind of a different angle with the campsite over here. This is where the cave will be that you can see stalactites, stalagmites in there. Up here as well, you'll be able to, this is wheelchair accessible, so you'll be able to get a wheelchair up to this point and also do a lookout and turn it around and exit the same way they came up. So we really took into account accessibility. That's just another view. And then this is the garage where you'd be able to get your car ready. So in the garage, there's going to be an electric car as well as a traditional car. You'll be able to check the tires, check the spark plugs. And our hope with this is to sort of engage kids in other types of activities that, you know, they may enjoy, the trades, things like that. We all know that's kind of lacking in society right now. So just to give kids a chance to be able to look under the hood of a car, change the tires. There'll be tools that they can do. They can repair the car. They can get it all ready for the road trip. And then on the road, as you saw in the larger drawing, there'll be this kid wagon, which we call it kid wagon. This is also accessible, so you can, a wheelchair will be able to wheel in there and also pretend to drive the car. You'll be able to pack your suitcases in the back. There'll be road maps inside, even though I know everyone uses their phone now, but there will be road maps. And then the 50s diner, this will be, we're going to have menus of foods from around the country. So kind of different types of dishes you would only get in, say, Wisconsin or wherever you will travel. So there'll be menus with all kinds of things in there, including a Kool-Aid dipped pickle, which someone told me was popular someplace. So that will be in there. Also, the booths are also handicap accessible, so you will be able to easily roll up to those as well. And then this is just a closer look at the cave that you'd be able to go in, in there as well. So we're very excited about this project. We have fundraised approximately 67% of this through private grants. The city has told us we will have $250,000 in CIP funds. And we are confident that we'll be able to raise the last about 33% or so before the project is finished. The project will probably take about nine months once the bid is awarded. So we're looking at probably next September or so until it's completed. We are applying for a grant with IMLS. That's the Institute of Museum and Library Sciences. We will be asking for $250,000 from them. We also have another $25,000 in a match grant from Hubbell Waterman. They already have committed 25,000, but they will give us another 25 once the project has started. So we'll have that. And then I do have an ask out to the Family Museum Foundation to contribute or to make up the difference if we are still in a shortfall before completion. So I would ask that, if anyone has any questions?
Questions for Kim? Bill? Kim, historically, or what do you use as a determining factor for when you come in and retool these things? I mean, how long is this going to be viable for? Do you have any thoughts?
So yes, normally what our process is, is we visit other children's museums, we find out what's exciting, what are people doing, what do we not want to do? And then we really just talk to guests and members and also educators, early childhood educators and kindergarten teachers. So normally, once a year, we have all the kindergarten teachers in. We talk to them about, you know, how can we help prepare kids for kindergarten? And they always say, or at least most recently, they've continued to say that the social, emotional pretend play element is really missing. And when you go to kindergarten now, you're basically sitting at a desk for almost the whole day. Playtime has diminished, recess time has diminished, lunchtime has diminished, and kids really re-energize their brain during free playtime. And there's not a lot of that anymore. So we really try to focus on those skills. We try to keep technology out, no screens. We all know, you know, children can operate a phone or an iPad. I see it, we all see it. So we purposely don't put any of that in there, so they're forced to interact with another child, interact with their caregiver, whoever's with them. So we spent a lot of time talking about what else could we offer that's different from what we currently have, but still kind of hits those goals. So does that answer your question?
Yeah, I appreciate that. Other questions? All right, I'd like to entertain a motion that this remain on tomorrow night's agenda is consent item C.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll take it up tomorrow as consent C. Let's move to consent M. This is for our community development director, Mark Hunt, Forest Grove Holdings, fourth.
Thanks, your honor. Just a couple of cases to go over for you tonight. 23064 is a site development plan for an orthopedic medical center. Both site plans tonight are going to be within a stone's throw of each other, so it's going to be two very similar areas. I did divide them up as two separate cases, so I will make two separate presentations.
Go right through them.
Thank you. Going to be real familiar with this parcel by the time we get done here tonight, if you're not already. The applicant is Eric Green, doing businesses as BBL Construction Services. This is the A and E firm that is working for ORE Orthopedic to be located on this site. Of course, this is not an accurate photo, but it does show you where it's at. Much has changed already on this site since the date of this photo. We have good alignment with future land use and zoning, so nothing to talk about here. We do have a future land use of community commercial, which does allow for a zoning of C3, which is the current zoning. So we are aligned in both future land use and zoning, as I mentioned earlier. Here's the most recent plat. We've had a few of these, so I'll go over this just a little bit to kind of orient you a little bit as to what's happened. The light gray lines are the old plat lines, that's the old stuff. And to draw your attention right here in particular, because that's where the action's going to happen, this was kind of a checkered board square previously, and now it's one big lot called Lot 7. And there's another large lot to the north of it called Lot 6. Everything else has been renumbered and portioned off as well, but for the sake of discussion here in the next few minutes, Lots 6 and 7, 6 being the north, 7 being the south, what we're going to talk about. I'll point out, you're not going to see much going on on Lot 6. It's there for future parking if we need it, but it's not going to be built out immediately. The way the surgery centers work now, parking is very in flux and they kind of want to see how things go before they build a bunch more. It's just probably better for you to look at this on your own screens or in your packets. This is not a great copy, I do apologize. The proposal shows 113,450 square foot structure, two stories, located on Lot 7, as I mentioned. This is just to the west of the driving range, the Top Golf Facility or Top Lake Golf Facility. Parking's mostly located around the building. And then to the south, there are crossesments in place. We've talked about that before. And then there is future parking up here if necessary on Lot 6. They've built a total of 506 parking stalls into their plan, 15 ADA stalls. That's more than code would require. But again, the way the inventory services work or inventory surgery centers work is they have a person there being treated, they have a person there in recovery, and they often have a person showing up in the waiting room waiting. So that parking count is a little bit different than anything we really analyze in our parking plan. So they're giving themselves an out, they've already overparked. If they need more, they've got room to do it. You see a note here, staff recommends service walks be added. This map or this drawing does show those new service walks. You're not going to be able to pick them out, but I will show you here. You're going to have service walks that will go north and south, and then east and west, and then north and south here as well to give us that connectivity if we do have any parking going on. So that's already been done since this was that planning and zoning. We have the updated drawing. I want to show you a couple of other things that are really important to the site overall and the larger site overall and the site in particular. Coming down in blue, not part of the site plan, but certainly going to be a big part of the area, is our future pedestrian bridge connection over Middle Road. And that will connect to a, I'll call it a trail, a trail if you will, paved trail for all that's showing in brown. So just north of this ORE facility, I don't want you to kind of confuse that as being part of the site plan, but it is integral to the overall project, if you will. Really good landscape plan. They've worked with us on this one to kind of reduce the number of maple trees. We have yet another invasive and it likes to eat maples. The spotted plant will fly, I believe is the right name. It's marching across the country. It's in Illinois, it's in Connecticut, it's doing its thing. It's going to hit maples hard, so we're trying to, until we get it codified, trying to reduce the number of maples totals to less than 50%, or less, let's just put it that way. And so they do a good job here of bringing in other species besides the maples. We have oaks and spruce and a locust or two in here as well. Just so you know, it's a locust without the thorns. So if you're familiar with the old thorny locust tree, this one does not have the thorns. So anyway, that brings that total number of maples down. They meet our tree requirement of 83 tree factors, so it's going to be a really well landscaped piece of ground, a lot of deciduous tall trees on it. And they have already met this 50% request of no more than 50% maple species. Here's some proposed elevations. These could change a little bit, but for the most part, two-story building, it's going to have that customer drop off here, I'm sorry, more likely here, the main customer drop off under that covered parking. And that'll be how most people actually access and use the site. Let me kind of go back just a slide, because I want to show you how that's going to work, orient you a little bit. So if you're coming in from Competition Drive, this is probably the main entrance that most people will take to get services and drop a loved one off or pick up a patient under this kind of cutout here, which will have that overhang that you just saw. You do also have access from this right in, right out on Middle as well, but this is probably the 80% of how people are going to come into this building and exit if they're going north. That'd be great, otherwise we'll exit back out on Competition. So due to points of access there as well. So we have a positive staff recommendation. We did have a couple of conditions. Those have been met already, but I will leave them on their behalf for the sake. Planning and zoning commission did unanimously approve the site development plan at the September 20th, 2023 meeting. Your honor, I'd be happy to answer questions.
Any questions for Mark? Greg, then Lisa.
Thank you, your honor. That right in, right out, is there a median?
I think it will be curbed. I'm not positive, if I remember correctly from our previous meetings, I think that's going to be curbed in the future. Looks like it is to me, but I can ask the works directors.
I don't have the plans in front of me, so I can't make, can't determine that.
Do you want to have another?
No, my recollection is that will be curbed, but I can't remember. There'll be a median at some time, if not delinators, but I know that question's come up before.
Just, I think we just need to make sure there is.
Yeah, I believe there'll be a median that indicate that. It's being built right now, so it's not shown, but that will be existing at the time. So you cannot go across into the Quickstar.
Lisa, was that the same thing?
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions? Yep, Jerry?
Thank you, your honor. Going back to the landscape plan, it looks like they planted the trees in the middle of those service sidewalks. Do we have the sidewalk people and the landscape people on the same page?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
You pointed out you had service sidewalks.
Yep.
But when I look at the landscape plan, they have trees planted in the middle of that, those sidewalks.
So these service sidewalks are theirs and the maintenance for those is their responsibility. Those trees are planted next to them. I don't know that they're planted in the sidewalk.
No, I mean the interior ones. Interior, right there, yes.
Yeah, I don't see a sidewalk here. I don't, I don't know that there's one there, but certainly they wouldn't be putting a tree in the middle of the sidewalk. They'd put it in the green space.
Part of their physical.
Well, when you go back to the, when you just were at, there, there you show the sidewalks.
Yep, the sidewalks are on the outside and this is the green space right here is that white. So they would plant the tree in the white spot. That would be green space, that would be lawn for planting.
Okay. Other questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
Looking at, can you go to the next slide, I think it was? So on the west elevation view, we have a series of doors coming out. Are we, do we know what that access will be? Is that going to be employee access? I'm thinking about just connecting to or making easy access to the gateway over Middle Road. Do we?
Yeah, so on the west elevation, so this would be facing the right in, right out. This might be another option for having patients leave. I don't know, they're internal operations. I'm just kind of guessing from conversations I've heard, but this is another place for patients that are on the way out to be discharged, to get out. The main entrance, 90% of everything, all the action's going to happen right here.
So if they exit out of this location, they'll presumably, if they want to go south on Middle Road, they'll have to circle around the building?
Yeah, they would have to take the drive path.
All right, that's fine. I just want to make sure I understood what was, who's coming in and out of there.
Other questions? All right, let's entertain a motion that this remain on tomorrow night's consent agenda.
So moved.
Your honor, this is Jeff, if I may.
Yeah. I thought you were going to attend so that you could hear and you didn't plan to say anything.
Well, I think, I think this is very important to bring it up at this time regarding this development. When we amended and restated the development agreement a couple of weeks back, we contemplated that development agreement as is. You know, we did not anticipate future growth and development options coming into play because we just wanted to be conservative and respectful to the DA terms. One item of note here, if you look at the size and scope of this project, this would be in addition to what we had contemplated. And as you recall, the city will capture approximately 20, the city will capture 25% of the TIF increment on all of these commercial projects. So based on the size and scope of this project, it is very safe to assume that the city will recoup approximately $125,000 to $130,000 annually as part of that TIF stream that we will be recuperating. So that's above and beyond anything we contemplated in that amended and restated DA, but I think it's very good to show and state that we are going to see a nice tax infusion of new revenue as part of this project.
Thank you, sir. Any questions based on that? All right, we had a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll take that up as consent M. Let's move to consent N. Mark, you still have the floor.
Thanks, your honor. So case 23065, it's just the northeast. I'm not going to bore you with the details here because they're exactly the same. But pay attention now to Lot 4. That's where the action will be for this presentation. Lot 4 really didn't change much over the, over the time, so unlike the others, you don't have a bunch of kind of gray lines that show old boundaries. It has pretty much consistently been that size and that shape. So within Lot 4, we originally had a plan for outdoor sports fields. That plan has now moved to indoor sports fields and that's what you see here with this, with this building. The interesting part to me is what's happening here. We'll get to that in a little bit. But really, so you're going to have four sports fields, multi-purpose type fields that could be used, baseball up to a certain age, of course, they can hit the ceiling if they're too grown up. Maybe some lacrosse, soccer, football, anything that can be done on indoor turf field you will have taking place here. It's a 24/7/365 possibility, if you will, because you don't have the cold winter months keeping you off those fields. We're going to park it kind of in a U shape, so your parking is going to be located all around, mostly on the east and west side, some on kind of the backside here as well. And while it doesn't say it in the plan, this is all kind of reserved for future development. They have some opportunities here to maybe do other fields or whatever the case may be in the future, but really this interior complex for sports fields. This is a pavilion area that will, I'm assuming just a little bit. This is a pavilion area that will connect, we talked about that trail coming over Middle Road, that bridge coming up Middle Road connecting to, under this brown trail that will lead into this pavilion area. This is kind of the heartbeat of this, of this operation. So you're backing up to IRNT here. You're at the front of a sports, indoor sports fields. And you've got a stage that you could have live music on or give awards on or, you know, do celebrations for teams that have just played. This will be a grass courtyard area. These will be outdoor pavilions to view onto that courtyard. I think there's three on the north and a couple here on the south. Oh, and there's four in the south, I'm sorry. Some dedicated walkways kind of through that pavilion grass and really just a place to kind of hang out and be and have some synergy between the sports complex and the IRNT here. And then with good connectivity to the other parts of the development, which we just talked about. Lots of parking, plenty of parking. Again, this place overall, the concept of parking is a little bit different than we're used to because it is a destination where you may park perhaps even on the other side and it's been the whole weekend going back and forth to the amenities. So plenty of drive aisles, we can get fire apparatus in here. So plenty of drive aisles. We can get fire apparatus in here if we need it. We have some green space here and it's gonna show better on another slide. If we wanna grow some more parking, we've left it, but we've really encouraged these developers to hold off on that big footprint of flat space. Give us some nice vertical, leave us some green space if we can. Don't park it if we don't need it because we have so much going on. And our, our, our parking code doesn't scale to anything of this size. It just doesn't. Kind of blows it up as you try and get through. Here's the floor plan for sports fields. You're surprised, I know. Covered outdoor space as well. And then what really doesn't show on this, because you're looking at the inside of the hall, so this kind of outdoor space, outdoor amenity space, which I think is really great. We're kind of giving up on the outdoor fields, but you're gaining an outdoor pavilion area, hangout area, which I think is really neat. A hundred and twelve thousand square foot building for multi-use, multi-purpose sports. Better look at your parking, better look at your available green space. That will blend naturally to this green space, but if we need it for parking, we can come back and do that. And then, again, they worked with us on the landscaping. We cut down the number of maples to fifty percent or less and did a good job with adding a lot of deciduous trees that'll give a lot of color in the fall and shade for people that are enjoying the area as well. These three D renderings, I would say as far as like size are accurate. I think the finessration, the fit and finish of the building is still up for consideration and developers working with their neighbors to kind of see how they wanna look and blend into the overall facility. So you kind of got a gray building here. Don't take that as, as the final color scheme and, and fit and finish. I think that's still up in the air for developer. We don't really have a say in that as a city. This isn't a DCA, but we have been assured they're looking at kind of matching what's going on in the other areas of development. And then your typical elevations, I actually like the three D renderings better. I think they're easier to see what it's gonna look like. And a note about how they're gonna try and blend with the IRNT golf complex on this slide. We do have a positive staff recommendation. We did have one note about the tree. They've already met that note and give us a new plan. And the planning and zoning commission also approved it unanimously or recommended approving unanimously on the twentieth of September twenty twenty-three. Your Honor, if I could answer any questions?
Questions for Mark? Jerry?
Thank you, Your Honor. Regarding maintenance, my understanding is the city is responsible for snow removal and maintenance of the trail. In other words, that portion that you had Mark showing as brown space on the drawings. But we are not responsible for the plaza area, correct?
Yeah, I don't know on that one. That's a little bit outside my jurisdiction. I would say that certainly the cover, the bridge coming over Middle Road and the blue portion would be ours. The interior portion, I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
There are several areas around this whole corridor that is gonna be the responsibility of the city. And that's why I'm gonna be requesting in one resolution that is on the consent agenda to purchase a new Ventrac tractor to assist Parks Maintenance and Public Works to complete those needs during the winter months.
But that plaza area, you know that that's not city responsibility, correct? That is owned by, owned by the developer, privately owned.
That portion is, yes, sir.
Thank you. Other questions? Phil?
Glad you're still attentive, Director Schmidt. With this landscape that evolves every month, how are you monitoring required stormwater detention requirements for the site?
The original development had enough detention to handle a lot more impervious area that was, that we currently have out there or what's anticipated. I'm confident enough that if anything would need to be adjusted is the stormwater outlet. And that's something that'll have my engineering staff continually look at as this entire corridor develops, especially over there on the east side of Middle Road.
But you, but you have ample amount of storage, is what you're saying.
We do, and it would just be a slight modification to the outlet if needed.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Yeah, Nick?
Thank you, Your Honor. In that additional green space, is it solely earmarked for just parking in the future? Or is there, I mean, it's not big enough to necessarily probably build another structure, but a park or some sort of thing there?
Yeah, I think the owner would have the opportunity to develop as they wish. Just kind of looking and seeing how this thing lives and breathes for a year or two
Yeah.
before they program it is probably a good idea. We just, we like the idea of having it available but not paving it right away. We wanna try to avoid, again, this isn't a DCA, but working with the developer and we're all on the same page. We're trying to avoid the big open sea of flat space. Pick a mid-century mall somewhere in America. We try not to do that. So they've really done a good job in trying to be really careful about their parking and how they're designing these parking lots to be shared and leaving that opportunity if we need it. And if we do, great. If we don't, wonderful. We can change plans, do something else there on that green space.
And then on, on the heels of that question, so you mentioned people coming here, you know, potentially crossing back and forth over Middle Road to use both the TBK and this new facility. Has there been any discussions around the, the parking agreements between these two organizations? Have that discussions taken place?
Yeah, so there are adjoining lots, for the most part, kind of a broad statement here, have cross parking agreements. So those are kind of built into the cake on each side, if you will. So now, I guess, as a business operator, if somebody decides to park on the west side and walk the bridge over and enjoy a meal or hit a few golf balls and then walk back and you really are really upset about that and you wanna tow that car if you're private property, I guess you could. I mean, I tell you, that probably won't happen 'cause they're happy to have them go back and forth.
How about with ORA? With their parking requirements, little unique situation, are they gonna be strict with their parking?
So again, that's their property. They're, they're plenty parked. I think we did put cross parking easements, again, with both of them. But end of the day, private owner, private land, you can do what you want on your own property as far as who you allow to park there or not. I'm not really concerned about that. The way we've designed the parking and pathways, I'm not too, too nervous about it. ORA is gonna be busy at a certain time of day that is offset from when the rest of this is gonna be busy. So those just natural occasion where you may have people coming together, wanting the same parking spot. Those hours are so offset for the most part.
Right.
ORA is finishing up their day three, four, five o'clock, and that's just when the IRNT and the sports teams are coming in to show up on a Thursday night or a Friday night. So natural fit, I think. There won't be a lot of head bumping on parking spots.
Perfect. Good, thank you.
Other questions? All right, let's entertain a motion to have consent item N remain on the agenda.
I'm moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, we'll take those up. Let's take a look at the remaining consent agenda items. I know, Director Schmidt, you mentioned consent I, and I know Jerry had a question on that earlier. Talk to me about the Ventrac tractor.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Your Honor. With the dry weather that we've experienced this past construction season, the contractor was able to complete a lot more work than we anticipated. Recreational trails, the brick pavers all around the roundabouts. With all these other developments that are happening around the corridor, this city's responsibility for clearing these sidewalks and trails as well through the winter months. So we're seeking authorization to purchase this new vehicle or this new tractor, this Ventrac tractor. We already have two of these tractors at the golf course, and we do have one at Public Works and Parks Maintenance that we specifically use in the downtown area. This is another, this is a piece of equipment that we already have a snow blower attachment to to help us clear the I seventy-four bridge and the sidewalks all down there. It also has an attachment for a broom, mowers. It has a rough cut mower, a finishing mower, also an air raider attachment so that we can keep the corridor on Forest Grove that we're anticipating air rating in the spring and, or in the fall and whatnot, and composting to keep that boulevard looking great. So we are seeking authorization for a new Ventrac. It wasn't originally purchased or requested by staff in the vehicle replacement program, but because of the accelerated schedule that is happening, like I said, because of the weather in this corridor, we're seeking authorization to purchase it before the winter months.
Where would the money come from to purchase it? Is it in the budget?
We were anticipating, it is not budgeted item, but we do have significant funding remaining. We anticipated a lot of soil stabilization that was required on the east side of Middle Road on Forest Grove heading east and Middle Road north. So we do have our local match monies that is available in that funding to purchase this vehicle out of the road use. And Jason can talk to that because he has worked with the city engineer on that funding that is available.
Yeah, to Brian's point, there's extra, I wouldn't say extra, but remaining funding left in the project. And we felt that since this piece of equipment was necessitated by the project and would serve the assets resulting from the project, that this was an appropriate place to spend the money.
Do we have a spot up there? We might be able to leave it with one of our friends?
That's something that we'll.
So you don't have to take it back and forth?
The developer.
Okay. All right. Any other questions on I or any remaining consent agenda items? Jerry?
I still have a problem with it. I think that we should delay it a year and put it into the regular budget process and use equipment replacement, replacement money for it. We've got adequate time. Most of these facilities will not be done this year. And those that are done this year, you pointed out, you already have existing Ventrex with broom attachments that you could take care of doing it that way. Using CIP money, I think that's the wrong way to go. CIP money, we bond for that. This piece of equipment will be on the junkyard before we're done paying for it, if we use CIP money. We have adequate equipment in the, in the Parks Department. I think they've got, what, at least a half a dozen Kubota's. Some of them are relatively new. You've already got a couple of Ventrex. I think we could accommodate it, and my recommendation is that we put it in the CIP. The other thing is, I look at fifty-three thousand dollars for a tractor and a broom seems rather expensive. We're buying pickup trucks with snowplow blades for less money than that. We're buying police cars for less money than fifty-three thousand. And my final point is, why are we going with Ventrac? We live in a town where a lot of our citizens work for John Deere. John Deere is a huge equipment manufacturer. Why aren't we buying local? In this case, the, the dealer for this is all the way to Williamsburg. That's a couple hour drive just to get repair parts. I think we've got, excuse me, we've got a policy about buying local where possible. And I guess I would like to at least see a consideration or a comparison of why, why we zero it in on this particular piece of equipment. So I'd like to make a motion to move it to the regular agenda.
Your Honor, after, out of respect for the process, I'll second that.
Okay. All those in favor moving consent I to our regular agenda tomorrow night? Signify by aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
That two?
Your Honor, I do have a couple of comments.
Hold on a sec, let me get my count. One, two, three, four, five, two, right?
You're a no. Greg, what did you say?
No.
Okay, yep, two no's.
We will remove it and we will add it as number nine before consent for tomorrow. And then I will go to you, Director Schmidt.
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to answer some of Jerry's, Mr. Holman Sessors' questions. As far as the number of pieces of equipment that your comment that we do have enough, I totally disagree with that. The Ventrac that we have dedicated to downtown with all the sidewalks and recreational trails that have been placed around the I seventy-four corridor, coupled with the fact that we have to plow that, the bridge, the I seventy-four bridge from Bettendorf over to Moline, back and forth twice during that, that particular piece of equipment is strictly dedicated to downtown. The other two at the golf course do not have the attachments that I referred to. Those are the attachments that, all they, all they have is the air raiders and
Mowers probably.
Mowers, and the finished mowers and stuff like that over there. So they don't have those attachments. As far as why we went with Ventrac is we went with this piece of equipment because no other piece of equipment is versatile like this one to have all the different attachments like a snow blower, a cedar, an air raider, a brush broom, all those other attachments. So we did investigate other pieces of equipment, and this was the best one that we felt as staff and recommended it for the city to purchase.
If there's anything else you want to share tomorrow night, you certainly may do so, Director Schmidt. We'll just take it up on our regular agenda. That's all. Okay. Any other consent agenda items? Any particular council member would like to discuss at this time? Seeing none, I'd like to entertain a motion that we approve all but consent I for consideration on the consent agenda tomorrow night.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, any operational item that any particular council person has a question about tomorrow? Looks like we have one first reading of a yield, and then the others are second or third readings. Brief meeting. Anything on the operational agenda? Seeing none, any items to be added by mayor or council this evening? I don't have anything. All right, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved. Second.
We stand adjourned. Good work, everybody. We will see you.